Okay, I have seven o'clock. So we will open the December fifteenth zoning board of appeals meeting. First agenda, oh, I guess first I'd like to welcome Anthony Zuko.
Thank you.
He is our newest board member. He's an associate, but because we are a little short tonight, you're gonna be stepping up and working on the couple of hearings we had before, so.
Sounds good.
Welcome. Okay, the first agenda item is sign design Conway hearing. I'm going to read into the record if I can find it here, because we did not actually open any hearings last meeting, because we did not have a forum, so.
John, I have to recuse myself.
Okay. So I will make note of that after I open the hearing. The Lakeville zoning board of appeals acting in accordance with Mass General laws, chapter forty A as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November seventeenth, at seven PM in the Lakeville Public Library at four precinct street. Upon petition of sign designer, special permit is requested under six point six point three point two. Maximum height from the crown of the road and six point six point three point five. Signs shall not project horizontally more than two feet and not exceed twenty feet from the ground. Six point six point six point one, signs larger in area and higher than specified in six point six point six point three. Internally illuminated signs require a special permit from the board of appeals as provided by the town, Lakeville bylaws. The property site is ten Main Street and application and sort of documentation can be viewed and was available at the planning department by appointment or at the town of Lakeville zoning board of appeals webpage. So, Caciene has announced that he will be recusing himself, which leaves us with four members. As I mentioned, Anthony will be stepping up as an associate for regular member for this meeting, but that still gives us enough to proceed forward at this point. So, as I normally do, I think the first thing is I'll let the applicant kind of tell us what you're looking to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. James Chase off of Jack Conway Company. We're here on a sign request, a permit for place our sign as part of our front facing sign, road facing sign, as part of our rebranding that we did, we began about six, eight months ago to implement, and this is one of the final sign stops in our multiple locations. We have all of us up in Massachusetts. I have more plans. I brought some with the last hearing on the fifteenth that they would like to see it. I'd be happy to have it passed up.
Sure, you can approach. Are they the same ones or?
This is the same one.
Same one, okay. So I know I just have, does anybody else need one?
I'll take one.
Yeah, so you actually.
I have it on, yeah, I'll take one too. I have it on the internet.
Right over here.
Thank you, appreciate it. So I'm not sure if anyone from sign design contacted the town, but we had some questions came up during the discussion last, in December regarding the square footage of the backing panel, right, the exceeding the minimum square footage, which is leading to the square feet. And that is calculated by either, I'm not sure if that may have been the town planned to be fifty-two square feet. You can see the dimensions on the building. It's replacing the sign that was there for many, many years, the Jack Conway real estate, the old logo and the seagulls. That's part of, the Jack Conway is just a rebranding of the company. The sign is backlit, the actual letters themselves meet the minimum, meet the maximum square footage allowed out of the bylaw. We were looking for the board's approval, which they granted, which they have the powers to allow us to exceed that. I think the sign's attractive, I don't think it, you know, given the area and the, you know, the pretty significant amount of commercial activity that's built up around that area. I remember building this building years ago, being part of the process. It was pretty empty back then, I was driving by, I don't get it too often, but the changes are amazing, but I think it's an attractive building, it's an attractive sign. And we just wanted to, and I know there were some discussions back and forth, never got too far, but again, just like the board's opinion on that. And I think the other request we got in the height of the crown of the road, speaker itself based on the square footage, based on the size of the building, based on the, you know, the replacement of the original sign that was there.
Okay. Before I ask board members to make comments or question for the record, I'm gonna read in a couple of memos that we have from other boards. We have a memo from the, it's like conservation, is that, is that what that is? Yeah, it isn't, it's Bob's, so, yeah. "I have reviewed the petition for hearing on a sign design at the reference property. There are no conservation issues for the petition, thanks Bob." And also from the planning board dated November fourteenth at their Thursday, November tenth hearing or meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the board of appeals. The board recommends the size and illumination of the sign complying with the, comply with the bylaw. They had no issue with the height of the sign, as it was the same approximate height as the pre-existing sign. So those, I believe, to be honest there, Kathy, are the only two memos we have from other, or comments from other boards, correct? We also do have a, I'm assuming this is an email that came in to us, is that correct? Or did someone drop this off?
Yeah, I think someone dropped it off.
Yeah, okay, so we, so we do have comments from, I guess we'll reference this as a neighbor. "My name is Claire LaPointe, I live at sixty-one Main Street." Yes.
I'm here and I would like to read that myself.
You are here, well, excellent, because I get to do all the talking, and I always don't want to do all the talking, Claire, so.
I would like to read myself, if you don't mind.
I would actually prefer that, so if you don't mind, Sarah, Claire, come on up and if you want to read your memo into the record and make any comments, that'd be good.
Thought it was your entrance music.
Any want to dance?
I'm turning off, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Sorry about that. Hey, my name is Claire LaPointe, and I live at sixty-one Main Street, and I'd like to address the special permit for the new building sign. Again, Conway is requesting a fifty-two point two square foot to match their twenty-nine other locations as they modernize their signs, which is twenty square feet over our bylaw. So I can understand their desire to have continuity in their signs, but I don't see a detriment to their image if they agree to adhere to our sign bylaw that no sign should exceed thirty-two square feet in area. I believe the zoning bylaw review advisory committee, when they created this, sign regulation six point six point one, they had the best interest of the town and all the businesses that would come forward. So what, in essence, what, the part that I read that I thought was pertinent, "The erection and maintenance of signs shall be subject to regulation in order to preserve and enhance the visual appearance and character of the town, and to prevent injurious and detrimental effects from distracting demands for attention resulting from uncontrolled shapes, sizes, colors, motions, lighting, and inappropriate locations." So I think that, you know, distracting demands of the signs, if they're all, all the other businesses in town, like the Dollar Tree store, Walgreens, and all the other stores on Main Street that are already there are complying with these bylaws. And what's gonna happen if this goes through, and I remember, I don't know if you were here when we did the Dollar Tree store, they wanted that huge sign, and it was kind of voted down, they get a lot of business, even though they didn't get that big, big sign, they got a lot of business. Trust me, I live kitty corner to that street, it's parking lots always full. So, the visuals that they provided, okay, their old signs fit between those two windows, more or less, on the face of that building, and the new sign increases across those two windows, so it is quite big, you know, it's larger. And I did notice they have a new red and white Jack Conway logo at the top of the building directory sign that faces traffic. So I was going down there one night, and I went, "Oh, that looks really nice." They're right at the top, it's larger than all the other tenants, and that's what people are gonna look for to find that building. They're not gonna look up at all the buildings and say, "Where's that store?" It's right on that sign that's, you know, on the sidewalk, if you will, I don't know exactly what you call those signs, but again, if you allow this permit, what about that new storage unit across the street? Suppose then they come and ask for a fifty-two square foot, and we set that precedent, you know, what are we gonna do? And again, all the other stores that, you know, either adhere to the bylaw, and some of them actually use spotlights on their signs to keep the lighting and the illumination down, which is much appreciated for the people who live there. So, you know, I just think that, you know, as a twenty-year resident of Main Street, living in that section of town before the Dollar Tree store was there, I know how the signs and lights have negatively impacted our lives, especially to enjoy the night sky, and we missed that when we first moved there, we used to go outside, and now it's all lit up with all those stores, and, you know, I just, I think it's, you know, in conclusion, I just believe that that sign is a little bit too extreme, and I hope you vote to adhere to the town's sign bylaw restricting it to thirty-two square feet, or find a compromise limit closer to preserve the town vision and character. So thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the board at this point? I guess we'll circle back to the presentation of Conway.
So I heard during Claire's presentation that you already have one street sign on a pole, is that correct? And so this will be the second sign?
This will be on the building.
On, yes, yeah, but two signs, all right. And the size of that existing sign that was installed, is that with the bylaw, so it was allowed, right?
Yep, it goes back to nineteen ninety-nine, I'm not sure.
Okay, I thought Claire said it was new, so.
I haven't come back once when there was the road light, lighting, and because of proximity of the signs to the road, we need to get a, I don't recall the signs. It's this side.
That's all I had, thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
Yeah, what would it look like if it kept the same look and style, but actually reduced it to the thirty-two square feet, would it just be narrower?
No, the, it would be slightly narrower, I have the design showing it at the thirty-two square feet. It's the, actually the letters, it wouldn't make much of a difference, it's a backing, you know, the letters are sitting on the backing. The backing is not backlit, it's just the letters don't look lit, so it's gonna be night and day, but the letters stay the same, the required fifteen points up in square feet, it's within the bylaws, the actual lettering, which you see at night when you go by. The backing is just the frame that sits on.
But the red will illuminate it, won't it?
What's that?
The red will illuminate it, won't it?
I don't believe so, sir, I don't think it will.
Just the letters, I think illuminate what looks like it.
Yeah.
Would it be illuminated by the brightness of the letters? I mean, it won't be backlit, but it will be illuminated by the brightness of the letters, so, I mean, if you have a drawing showing thirty-two square feet.
Do you have the thirty-two square feet? Yeah, could we take a look at that, I mean?
Yep.
Is that the one? Yeah, it'll be the same, just backing smaller. Yeah, the backing is basically, the letters exactly the same.
Just the same. Thank you, sir.
Just the backing.
It's narrower. So, this versus this, it goes essentially the same thing.
Still gets the idea across. The letters are the same size. Letters are thirteen fourteen, thirteen fourteen, still one sixty-one.
So the only difference on the second one you handed us is that red backing is gonna be shrunk down, correct?
That's true.
Do you want to see this?
I mean, I'm only one, one on the board, but I gotta tell you, I, I don't see a drastic difference, if any at all, to the naked eye, with complying with what our current bylaw is. But I don't know if anyone else on the board wants to comment, or?
We've had a lot of these come by the board in the last few years, and they've been pretty heated, Dollar Tree was one of them.
Dominos.
Dominos, the flashing sign right at the lights at Bedford and Rhode Island, the gas station, and we've kind of stuck with the bylaw, so I kind of like the bylaw.
I would agree. It keeps less window, lesser window opening for newer places to go up, and I agree.
We want to be a good neighbor, that's all, we always have, always have wanted to do that.
At least your letters are the same size, you're not making the letters smaller, so image is still there.
Answers always no if you don't ask, right? So you may as well at least ask. Having said that, I'm giving the inclination that you're, you're fine going with the bylaws, so.
That's fair.
I don't think we necessarily need to take a vote on this. You wanna draw without prejudice in case something comes up, or do we want to just deny it?
No, they would still need the special permit for the height.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
My apologies.
Point one, point one, and I think it was.
I apologize, I got caught up in the, the size, so. Anyone have any concerns over the remainder of the special permit requests?
They pitched the building fine, truthfully.
I mean, it's replacing the existing signs in the same spot on the building, same height, everything else, it was just the size, it was gonna be different.
Yeah, so, yeah, he needs the special permit for the internally illuminated and then above twenty feet, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
You're not coming out more than two feet, right? The letters don't come out the building that far.
Actually, that dimension might be on the, on the plan.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
It is somewhere.
Yeah, I think it is, but certainly not.
No, it's only two inches.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd make a motion, if you're so ready.
I am ready.
Make a motion to accept the internally illuminated sign request and the height of above road at twenty feet, but not allow the sign to exceed thirty-two square feet.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Recusal, vote carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, I'm mine.
That's mine. Okay, the next hearing. Lakeville zoning board of appeals acting in accordance with Mass General law, chapter forty A as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November seventeenth at seven PM in the Lakeville Public Library, four precinct street, upon the petition of, please correct me if I'm wrong, Sir David Chozen. I do good? All right. "Special permit is requested under six point one point three and seven point four point six to replace a deck and stairs, stairs consisting of two hundred and forty square feet with a new deck and stairs consisting of two hundred and twenty-eight square feet, located on a pre-existing non-conform law as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. The property site is seventeen Dunbar Road. The application and sort of documents could be viewed at the planning department or at the Lakeville zoning board of appeals webpage." So, Mr. Chozen, if you'd like to come up and, I know you were here last time, and kind of gave us a little preview for those of us who are here, but we kind of gotta start this from, from scratch, so why don't you tell us exactly what you're looking to do, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. So, looking to replace a deck that was falling apart, it was very unsafe, and I included some pictures showing some of the damage it was doing. It was also built on top of my septic system, so that was a problem as well. So it needed to be replaced. The new deck is two, I, I'm not sure what you said, but I calculated it out to be, the new deck to be two hundred and twenty, two point eight square feet actually, and the old deck was two hundred and forty square feet, so it's a smaller deck size. It reclaims seventeen feet approximately of overage on one neighbor's distance to the abutment, and the staircase goes over about three, three and a half feet further towards another neighbor's property, but that's not property that he's able to build on, it's forested area, it's not wetland, and both neighbors have given me support to do that. So I, I think that's approximately it. The footprint's a little different, but it's a lot safer.
I think you've covered it in a nutshell, so let me read a few things into the record here, and then we can take questions from, or comments from the board, if anyone in the audience wants to. "On November seventh, we received a letter from the board of health. We received a copy of the petition for hearing of seventeen Dunbar Road. The board of health does not have any objections to proposed deck, providing it does not come within five feet of the septic system, but our record showed that there was not a title five inspection done at the sale of the home in two thousand and seventeen. This is concerning, because there were a number of issues with the title five inspection that was done in two thousand and fifteen. Three-ten CMR fifteen point three oh one requires title five inspection at time of transfer. Given this information, board of health would like to know why title five inspection was not done, or provide a complete title five inspection." We also have a memo from the planning board dated November fourteenth. "At the Thursday, November tenth meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the board of appeals. The board has no comments regarding this petition." In addition, we do have some comments or letters from a butters. Daniel Shaughnessy to the Lakeville zoning board of appeals, to whom it may concern, the owner of the adjourned property to seventeen Dunbar at Lakeville, Mass. "As, as a, and I brought it to seventeen Dunbar Road, I have no objections to David Chozen's replacement construction of the back deck. The new deck will be within an acceptable distance to my adjourned property." That was dated October eighth. And we also have another letter to whom it may concern. This letter is in support of my neighbor, David Chozen, with his request for a permit to build a deck from the town of Lakeville. We are David's closest neighbor, our garage lot abuts the land that David's home is on. David's home has had a back deck attached to it for at least the previous twenty-five years. When we finished, when we first moved to Lakeville, David has shown us the plans for his new back deck, and it is actually smaller in size and further away from the property line than the previous deck. I see no reason to deny this permit request, I therefore ask for your support and approval of this permit, signed Gene Consella and Roland Goncal, Goncal's house. That was dated October fourteenth.
Okay. Also, I had that last meeting, my other neighbors that were about it on the back property, they were here in support of that as well.
Okay.
Also, by the way, the, the title five thing is not correct.
I'm gonna stop you right there, hang it, just hang tight.
Okay.
We read it into the record, you heard it, go talk to the board of health, catch that sound. Questions, comments from the board? I don't personally see an issue with this, obviously you need to do it, and you're less infringing now, so do we have any, one in the audience who has any questions or wants to make any comments? You ready?
No, make, who's gonna make the motion?
Oh, come on, give him a break.
Come on.
If you don't, I'm gonna force Campbell to do it.
Then let's do that.
I'll make a motion.
Would you?
I don't know. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
That's it, you say that?
No, 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 no. Let me do this, I'll like to take a motion to approve the special permit as applied for it. Somebody want to make that, then you, now you say.
Make a motion.
You make that motion.
That motion.
Excellent. We have a second for that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, sure, take the easy way out there. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, you are all set. Kathy, tell them what the next step is.
We have two weeks to complete the paperwork, which I had said I would try to get that done quicker. After that, it goes to the town clerk, and there's a twenty-day appeal period. If there's no appeals, she'll sign it, and then you take it to the registry of deeds and record it, and then you can get your bill done.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for your patience. Unfortunately, the wheels, government moves slowly sometimes. Okay. There we go, this is what we're looking for next. Yeah, okay. Next agenda item is the North Bedford Crossing LLC hearing, which was continued. All I need to do is read into the record, we did receive a memo from the attorney, Mike O'Shaughnessy. Please consider this a request to continue tomorrow's, this, this was sent on December fourteenth, request to continue tomorrow's UDA hearing. As my understanding, Jeff Youngquist will be out, also have the plan, well, the rest of it is some questions, so Mark, but yes, Mr. Youngquist was chairing that meeting, I was not here last time, and so they're looking to continue that, as Jeff will not be here tonight, won't be back till January, so anyone want to make a motion to continue?
Only thing, it's really not part of the hearing, but if, in talking to attorney Shaughnessy, they want to do this afterwards, is to select one of the engineering firms to review.
Okay, yeah, let's make sure we, we can continue it, and then we can talk about that, so.
I'll make the motion to continue the hearings in January.
Do we have a second?
January nineteenth.
January nineteenth, thank you, Kathy.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Mark, why don't you update us on?
So we received the two proposals from Beals and Thomas and BSC as it relates to this particular project as well, and it's similar to the previous proposals with hourly rates based on the, the type of personnel working on the project, and with an estimated kind of cost based on plans that were previously submitted. So the applicant has indicated either is fine. What's interesting is the estimated cost by Beals and Thomas is significantly lower, it's only seven five hundred dollars, while BSC's estimated cost is about eleven thousand.
Is there any reason for such a variance in difference?
Not really, sure, I mean.
We chose Beals and Thomas for the other one, didn't we?
Yes.
And they were higher last time, I'm just curious as to why.
Are they gonna come and present, Beals and Thomas?
Um, yes, they are going to, um, site visit, review letter, hearings.
Hearings.
So one hearing, probably, we will attend two in-person public hearings, actually.
Perfect.
Supplemental review, because usually there's some adjustments, and then some reimbursable expenses, so.
Do you have a preference?
I do not have a preference.
I should say a recommendation.
At work with both firms.
Well, you'd be working with them on another one, why don't you just keep the telephone line open for you, that's easier.
Sure, that's fine.
All right, I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
To take Beals, Beals and Thomas.
I second that.
Okay, Kamichael made the motion, and Campbell seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, we have some minutes to approve. Correct, right Kathy? I don't think, did we vote on the, we didn't vote on the October minutes last night, because we didn't inform, right? So we gotta have two sets this time, if I'm correct. This is what happens when I print out stuff double-sided, yeah. Doing my thing to stay green, but now I'm confusing myself. Uh, okay, so we have two sets of minutes to approve, we have the October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, and the November third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, let's see, I know personally, I was. I know personally, I was not here for the, was I here for the November 3rd? Because we had two hearings in November. The November 3rd one was the first one. Was it the second?
No.
I'm sorry, the October one was the one I was in here for.
Yeah.
Okay, so I cannot vote on the October 20th one.
Missed one of those as well, so...
Well, let's make it easy on ourselves here. Fortunately, Kathy tells us who was in attendance. Again, this double-sided thing is killing. All right, so I was...
I was not here.
You were not here for the October one.
Nope.
I think it's just me and Chris who are here. Because Jerry's not here tonight. And I think we were told...
You could vote on that.
You can still vote on that because it was only...
Yeah.
Yep.
The majority of those who were here, so... Anyone want to make a motion to approve the October meeting minutes?
Make a motion to approve the October 20th meeting minutes.
There's only one guy who can second.
Can second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? You can't be a favor, you weren't here.
Absolutely.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. November 3rd, so, members present, I was here, Jerry was here, Chris, Chris, and Chris, so everybody was here. How's that sound? Anyone want to make a motion to approve the November meeting minutes?
So made.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Kathy was kind enough to stick in our packet the meeting dates for the upcoming year, so we're always the third Thursday, but it's nice to have the date in front of you, so we can...
I like that. Did like those middle you put on there, too, Kathy. Are we sticking with that?[1743.16]